Number twenty-third. I could ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, very well.
All right.
Yeah, I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can feel better. I pledge allegiance to the federal.
There you go. If I could ask commissioners to review the meeting minutes from last meeting and advise of any questions, comments, claims?
Oh, I apologize.
Mr. Revich.
Present.
Ms. Hager.
Here.
Ms. Rosetti.
President.
President.
Mr. McBride.
Present.
Ms. Duhae.
Here.
Myself present.
Everybody's here. Thank you. No, if I could ask the commissioners to review the meeting minutes from our last meeting. Any questions, comments, claims?
I had one small correction. Commissioner Rosetti asked that it be noted that representatives from Hampshire were not there, so I request that be added to the meeting minutes.
They'll be noted and changes in effect.
Are no other questions, comments, concerns? If I could entertain a motion to read the minutes with the adjustment noted.
I'm looking at this.
For a second.
Mr. Revich.
Aye.
Ms. Hager.
Aye.
Ms. Rosetti.
Aye.
Mr. McBride, stand. Ms. Duhae.
Yes.
Myself, thank you. Mr. Khan, assuming we do not have any more sense of public comments?
Do not.
First and only item on our agenda this evening, case number PZC twenty-four zero seven, public hearing. I will open the public hearing at seven oh three. Mr. Khan, do you have any initial background on this?
Yes, I'll just give a summary of the staff with the agenda supplement. The applicant is requesting a front yard setback variance to offer a front yard setback of ten feet versus what's required, which is twenty-five feet for the construction of a single-story restaurant building on N-115 Arrowhead Drive. The petition is proposing to construct a approximately one hundred and twenty-seat restaurant. They'll sit just north of the existing Super Eight Hotel at the subject property. In terms of adjacent zoning, we have to the north, we have, I apologize, it says PRD, but she said just a, oh, office and restricted manufacturing. To the south and west, we have pilot commercial restaurant and gas station uses. And to the east, we have M-two general industrial district, which is a base on improved land. In the agenda supplement, you do have a table showing projects and files for the zoning bulk standards. For the zoning district, there was changes made to the architectural plans. The eleven-by-seventeen that you have on the diet shows the parking stall with a ten feet, which was required by code. What was in the packet was showing width of eight and nine feet. So they increased the width to meet the zoning code requirement of ten feet. In terms of the findings of facts, they have found that finding facts were met and are recommending approval. Generally, the property cannot be used. If they're for the zoning code, then it would result in loss of parking installs. That would need a variance in itself. And in terms of changing the character of locality, it would not. It's a commercial area, it's a commercial use. In terms of bulk, it wouldn't be increasing the bulk of the area compared to the industrial buildings nearby. There were no public comments provided prior to this meeting. And then those staff, this date in their agenda supplement, would not recommend any conditions of approval. But I would just add a general condition that it meets zoning bulk standards for the zoning ordinance. Just to make sure that there aren't any other situations we haven't caught. So that there's a general condition of approval. Both the petitioners representative and the petitioners architect are here tonight. To answer any questions, we give you further information if you need any further information on the request. Now, I'll turn it back over to Chairman Rock.
And because this is a public hearing, we do have to do the, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and all that, correct?
Yes, and I can do that.
All right. Gentlemen, if I step up? Yeah, if we could politely ask any additional input, perspective from your end, a little background on your goals and your vision.
Yeah. That's where you went?
Sure.
You swore to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
So, yeah, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was approached by the owner of Super Eight Hotel and a gentleman over here, which will be the restaurant owner, to do a restaurant approximately one hundred and twenty seats. And the only real location we can get to work, he said he didn't want to connect it to the Super Eight Hotel, but he wanted it out front, he wanted it very accessible for patrons of the hotel as well as truckers that were coming in from out of town. And also families, as it becomes more and more developed out here for, I don't know, softball tournaments, baseball tournaments, and that, so. Putting a restaurant in front of this hotel made a lot of sense. In order to get the whole, in order to get the restaurant to the size we need it though, we needed to go from the twenty-five-foot setback to a ten-foot setback. Or else it really starts to tinge in a restaurant and you're not even going to get fifty chairs in there, fifty seats. What we did is we performed, or we put together a plan with the shows existing and then the shows the new. With the existing, I would say there was like five trucker stalls on the backside of the hotel. And then there was all the parking that was at the front. I don't recall what that number was offhand, but it fell below what the hotel requires based on the zoning of one parking spot per room. In the drawings, you'll see that it says fifty-five rooms. I just found out from the owner, we actually have fifty-four, so that helps us a little bit. And then as far as the restaurant itself, we wanted to make sure that we got parking for the hotel as well as for the restaurant. For the restaurant, we've got four thousand four hundred and ninety, did the math, ended up being, what was that number again?
Four.
For the, for the restaurant parking?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, I think?
Thirty-three.
So thirty-three, so you do the fifty-five and thirty-three, which is now fifty-four and thirty-three, you're eighty-seven spaces. We were able to get the eighty-eight spaces in using two, two spaces over by the trash dumpster. That would be parallel parked. The parallel parking there would reduce the, the drive aisle below the twenty-four foot, so that would be a one-way area there if we have to go to that additional space. If we, if we can land call those two spaces or one space over there, would end up being from the fifty-four to the fifty-five. If we could call that land bank parking, just put it in there later if it comes to parking issue. That's what we'd like to do, it just cleans it up there and you don't have the one-way. As far as the restaurant itself, you can explain a little more about.
Yeah, what it is?
This is Alan Diamon. Before you start, can I swear you went?
Yeah.
You swore to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So I'm a partner of the restaurant, I'm not the owner of the Super Eight. So we, we did some feasibility work to check. My partner has a Super Eight and he has a trucking shop in Hampshire and he sees a lot of opportunity building this restaurant with after, we did a little bit of research, we really think it's a good place. It's just out of exit, there's not much, I mean, there's some eating places, but this place is going to be more diverse to other communities. We have Algen, that's, we have some concepts that we think it's going to fit there that even we had let, we did check from Hampshire to Rockford, there's not much good places where people can eat. So we think it's going to be more, more mixture of American culture and Central Asian and like some diverse cuisine over there. And yeah, as Alan already told you, it's going to be like hundred.
Like one hundred and twenty?
Yeah.
Not, not counting the exterior, see, and draw something in between the hotel and restaurant itself and outside the hotel as you're pacing, or as you're looking at the hotel from there.
Is that the great zone on the map?
Yeah.
Any questions for the petitioners? On my side of things, I did notice that there was what appears to be like the main electrical box on the west end.
That's going to have to get relocated.
Okay.
That was the first thing I told the, the owner of Super Eight, I said, why you know now, let's get it moved.
Okay.
Where would it be moved to? Probably going to look at, talk to, work it out with him a little bit, but it's probably going to go on, not get confused with the directions. As if I'm standing in Arrowhead looking at the hotel, it's somewhere to the left side, probably.
On that north side in that empty area?
Is that north? Yeah.
That was. All right, so you're making the eastern spot, like you said, the two side spots, that would be a one-way passage. So the north entrance would be enter-only basically, then they head to.
Yeah, if, if we have to go that way, I mean, if we can call that land bank parking for the one or two stalls there, that's what I would not have to do, then it's just a clean drive-through there and you don't have to deal with the one-way.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question of Will?
Sure.
Can we change the recommended variance language, just to start to include parking?
No, because we do not publish.
Okay.
For that, we just published from the front yard setback.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to clear up. Architecturally, you, you had, you had mentioned in front of the hotel, is that why we did the partial wrap or?
Wrap, wrap it, yeah. If, if we don't get the twenty-five, if we don't get the ten feet versus the twenty-five feet, if you take that line of where the ten-foot setback is, you're cutting out quite a bit of seating there and he's also got a couple of prayer rooms that are there on that one side. So that gets lost, you know, that'll get taken out from it and it ends up being around fifty to sixty persons, you know, for customers.
Okay.
So it really cramps, cuts them down.
Right.
Raises them.
In this new layout, did you see, or did you think that there might be opportunity in this kind of island that you've created with the new parking configuration to gain square footage in the restaurant?
What?
I just saw this opened up a fair bit when you added in these unbanked.
Actually, actually, I didn't. Well, I should close it off when I walk into this. This has always been here, I had this as some green space or something back here. Start pushing it back here further, that's going to start encroaching into this parking. Over here, I'm not encroaching parking, so I'm not going to be able to park account that I need.
Okay.
Plus, I think it's, it's a good idea to wrap it around the building here, just kind of frontal view for Arrowhead, I think it's a nice little building.
I'm not sure what you're looking at, but is that in relative, I'm questioning.
Yeah, it's relative to this.
Okay. So it was kind of.
Because if this got pushed this way and this wasn't here, then your rooms and all this parking.
So, sorry, I'm full of questions here. Why did, why did you choose to go for a variance on the front yard setback instead of potentially a parking variance?
Because we feel it'd be better to wrap the front of this building with it. I think it enhances the look of the hotel as well as the restaurant, having that backdrop, it gives us some depth and it makes it more frontal on the street. Versus if we were to show it back, it's like going to get lost.
Additional questions? Well, I think that's all the questions we may have for you at this time.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioners discussion amongst themselves? Any complaints?
I, I'm a parking person. I, I see an opportunity for parking variance more than I do a setback. And that might be my bias as a parking person. But I see an opportunity that there is a hotel and there is a reasonable assumption that hotel patrons will also be utilizing the restaurant. So I see a variance for shared parking between the two, not doing a straight out, but saying, hey, some of these folks who are parking associated with the hotel are also going to go to the restaurant. That's a reduction in total of rest spaces. I see that as an opportunity. I see an opportunity that Hampshire's parking geometrics are generous, more generous than anybody around this area, ten feet wide. With this layout and the layout that was previous with the nine-foot stall layout, I see the opportunity if we're looking at a parking variance to skinny up some parking stalls and gain back some land and gain additional stalls. So I, I don't understand the front yard setback from a findings of fact standpoint when we're looking at what is this site constraining to this property. But I do see trying to meet the parking requirements as being a potential hardship on this property. But not necessarily a setback, in my opinion.
I have a question again about this one area right in here. What is right there in this, it looks like it's just blind dead space.
Is that green?
Which space?
The one I just asked you about.
Oh, right.
Currently, what is that space? Because it looks like.
That could be a landscaped area, I mean.
So moving this over here isn't an option?
Right, but, but if we do that, right, what happens to the front of the building? The front of the building is now, let's call it fifty feet versus we've got a hundred and something feet where you get more frontage with the restaurant. I think it really enhances the look there. Especially because it's up on a hill there too, so.
This, in my own opinion, but this bothers me, I'm a safety person and this part here, just kind of, I can't get over the, oh my God, that's so right there on the road.
Right.
The gray area for the outdoor seating here.
Right.
It's just too tight with, with Arrowhead Road.
Sure.
This whole gray area here.
If we got the, that's your elevation, I see what's all around here.
Technically, the proposed outdoor eating will be twenty-five feet there to the curb.
Over here?
Correct.
Over here?
Yes.
Just switching the direction.
Actually, I apologize, there's just several inches.
No, you have, the outdoor eating is going to be all off the curve.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So there is a difference between the curb and the property line and then the actual.
This is if you're calling over here, right? So this is as you're approaching the building, but it's like, oh, yes, you see, we have to get more pleasing, everything else, because there's a signage.
We took.
These are their interns, it really kind of describes what's going on here as you walk, you drive this way. They're really seen, right? And then you turn a corner, this is as you turn a corner, right, this, this right here is. Thank you very much.
I, I think this helps a lot.
Yeah, sorry, you did.
Commissioner, do you mind?
Yeah.
Don't you mean for parking variance?
It's not something that's currently being proposed. But the way that our parking zoning, or the zoning code parking portion is very prescriptive. If you have this property, you must have X stalls per square feet provided on the property. This property is unique that we have two primary uses being proposed. We have the existing hotel and we have the existing restaurant. And the way that the design team is currently proposing their stall count is taking that prescriptive requirement for the hotel plus the prescriptive requirement for.
Separate.
Set the restaurant separately. And what I was hypothetically discussing, which isn't on the table, is it is likely that hotel patrons will overlap with restaurant patrons. That's what I mean by shared parking.
Got you.
That's not currently allowed in our zoning code. But I could see an argument for a variance with that kind of logic. Similarly to the ten-foot stalls in Hampshire versus a more traditional nine-foot stall.
Sure, thank you.
It's a different way to skin the cat. But I also see the architect, you know, his vision of this partial wrap and frontage on Arrowhead and I understand the design intent better with his explanation.
Thank you.
Mr. Khan, just to clarify, if I am not mistaken, twenty-five-foot easement, or I'm sorry, the twenty-five-foot setback is off the easement, the actual legally agreed upon line, demarcating village property and the property.
Right, it's off the property line now, I'm favor of mine.
Yes, so looking at the, the plans, there would still be technically twenty-five feet from the curb to the building.
Correct. Correct.
Though, though it's not said, and we have ish, thank you, ish, just a hair under twenty-five feet.
Yeah, that twenty-four-three or something like.
Yeah, I did see that, twenty-four-seven, five percent.
Okay.
So there would still be twenty-five feet from the curb to the building as proposed. There would still be twenty-five feet from the curb to the outdoor seating area as proposed. Just want to throw that out there.
No, but I, I counter the, the variances from the property. The property contains a functioning hotel that currently meets the zoning requirements for this property.
Correct.
So the intention to add a restaurant to this property is what's driving the request for the variance.
Correct.
And intrinsically, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return is what we are making this decision on. I'm assuming the property is yielding a reasonable return with the current hotel.
Well, with the hotel, can I add something?
Yeah, go ahead.
With, with the hotel, currently the parking doesn't have the fifty-five spaces there, it's short. I don't recall what that number was, but it was on one of the sheets. So it's less. So what we did is we actually have added a few additional spaces for the hotel to get their mark and then plus we've got it for the restaurant.
I have another question for you, Mr. Khan, something I couldn't actually determine myself. The variance, is that tied to this particular building or is it tied to the property as a whole? Because now we're going to have two separate buildings.
If it's approved, there'll be ordinance with the exhibit of this site plan.
Okay.
So it's, it's to both.
Okay.
It's to the property but also to this specific site plan.
All right. I was just kind of curious if there's something that leaves a loophole that could be leveraged later on, saying, well, there's a variance on this property that allows us to do something in the future.
Hopefully, the way the ordinance is written, the exhibits attach, they want to be able to build a different building.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion point for the commissioners amongst themselves or to the petitioner?
The only thing I have is, is not really much so related to the front access, just knowing how the operations are of what we're doing with the, with the fire department. And I know this comes back to the parking side, having that one-way area over there is a little bit pragmatic just because of our operations, way that we go. And I know in emergencies, we can do whatever we want typically, but we don't like go and get us the grain per se. So having that, that in the back is a one-way because our, our typical operations are coming through on the front of the hotel and we're, we're out there quite frequently at the hotel. So that's.
In the event of a fire, would the restaurant have its own address? So if there were to be a fire and the restaurants would be called in from the restaurant?
Yeah, I don't know, I, I mean.
Mr. Khan and/or the architect, I actually don't know. Would this restaurant have its own separate address?
In water.
Okay.
And then have we, have we looked at with turning, because we do have a ladder power, a hundred-foot stick or a hundred-foot bucket? Is that, is, is this turning point over here going to be enough to be able to accommodate that ladder truck?
Over and far.
Up in the, the.
The northern.
Northeast corner there? What we can do is we can put it, put something together with our civil engineer and he'll, he'll do a turn for you. We can provide that tomorrow.
Is anything even changing with that? Because I don't see anything in the plan, but I don't see need for the existing turn, that curved curb. Is anything changing with that?
With the curb coming into the.
The northern entrance.
The northern entrance? I think I actually, I kept it where it was with the curb cut with the outside. But I did have to widen it up in order to get the twenty feet, the twenty-four feet, another twenty feet. Now, a question I have too, with the twenty feet, can we do an overhang to get the twenty feet over the curb?
An overhang is not in the village ordinance. So there is not a, I don't know, with the state of, of the village ordinance either.
This is mutually exclusive, they can come back for parking issues, right? Or if you want to skinny up the slots and, and shuffle it around.
We're technically just dealing with.
We're just talking.
The front.
Right, yeah.
That was just.
Now, but.
Right.
Speaking of hypothetical.
Yeah, overarching concerns and issues, everything we've talked about.
And we, we can get more parking with the nine feet, so then again, if we go to nine feet with the stalls, obviously we're adding more, so.
So.
And we can reconfigure that a little bit on that one side too, we had.
If I can jump in, is the petitioner willing to come back for separate variance?
So.
Or combined variance for what Stu Haig said with the shared parking and reduced width? Or is that something you are not interested in?
That's anywhere you go. You're all right, you're okay, just hang on. A week, what, like a week or so, two weeks?
Well, it come, it would come back to the next planning zoning commission meeting on October twenty-third. October twenty-eighth.
My point, just to clarify, was not to table this, our existing conversation or the existing proposed amendment as much as to say that theoretically they could come back and then we would just treat it separately, the parking issues.
We can come.
Yeah.
So we're on the same page, I, I didn't seem to table or put a pin in the existing.
Can we, can we propose, we go for the variance now for the ten versus twenty-five? And then as far as the parking, we can come back on that.
Regrettably, we couldn't do, it's not on the publicly posted agenda, especially since this is a public hearing.
Well, if they come back.
Well, yes, separate.
Then we came back as a separate.
If you were to request a second variance requiring a second, meanwhile, make that known.
Another fee of five hundred dollars.
If I could step in and answer this, or yes, yes.
So now it's up to this commission to decide, do you want to make a recommendation on this request tonight or table and wait for it to come back?
Will, do, do you mind if I step up for a second? Do you swear me in?
Yeah. You swear to the whole tune?
So I've got this.
Thank you.
I, I want to just touch briefly, I, I know I've seen many of you in the past before and I've talked about my start and where I've come from.
my start and where I come from and my beginnings in Hampshire. The purpose for a lot of this is to improve what I believe is something that that particular area is, is lacking. It is less than lack luster variance curb appeal in that area. I remember that area much differently in the mid nineties and it's not that today. Uh, I remember an area that brought community together. I remember an area where I knew a lot of the local Hampshire, uh, people. I remember an area where I used to sit down and have coffee with Kathy Randdecker and, uh, uh, Paul Hoseg and several other members of the community because I met him there at the Country Run Restaurant and we used to share dinners and you know, you'd, you'd have people from Wrango that come over and there'd be families, families were congregating there, families would come there and and if it wasn't there, there was the station across the street that also had a, a family restaurant. Uh, the purpose of this is to try and gain some of that back because I feel that Hampshire is now in an opportunity in a phase where we should be able to introduce that back with the addition of people like Truck Country, Dayton Freight, uh, Old Dominion coming to the area. I believe that the area has that demographic. Uh, now, I believe that there is that financial stability in the area now that we should be able to introduce that. And when I go there, I remember it as something different than what I look at it today. And I feel that if I can initiate that start, I can initiate that change, maybe there'll be others that'll follow suit and will wanna bring that area and that community back to something that I remember it as and something that I was particularly fond of. Um, I'd love to be able to bring my wife and my kids out, uh, to sit down uh, at a family restaurant in the area and just kinda enjoy. Uh, and I believe that that area is lacking that. Uh, there isn't much going on. If you look at the DA across the street, where's the curb appeal there? Uh, that curb appeal's been lost. I- i- and it, and it's been lacking there for a long time. And you would think that an organization, incorporation aside and the magnitude of that, pay a little more attention to that curb appeal. Uh, I wanna raise that awareness. I, I would like to add that curb appeal to it. And I believe that adding that to the frontage, to the front side of that building is going to emphasize that and it's gonna draw attention to it. I also believe that I need to change the, the, the prospective customer of what that Super Eight brings in today. I, I would like to change that opinion of that. I don't want that. I don't want these patrons that have to go to Huntley, um, to, to stay at a hotel on holiday. Why can't they stay at Hotel in Hampshire? Why can't we, uh, pray that, why can't we coordinate that? Why does, when the Truck Country folks or, you know, Old Dominion folks or today's Dayton Freight folks, when they come and visit the locations, they're, they're not staying in Hampshire. They're, they're not staying in Hampshire. They're not, uh, they're, they're just, that doesn't stay here. It goes out, out. Uh, I'd like to be able to harness and capture as much of that as I can. And that, that's just what I'd like to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As a far north sider, I would like some sort of sit-down restaurant. It's not always super convenient to get downtown or to the Red Ox and I'm tired of sending my money in Huntley. So I, I don't consider this fifteen feet of shrubs particularly sacrosanct.
I have a different perspective. I, I want a restaurant in this location. But it's our purpose here to provide interpretation of our zoning code. And I'm, I, I'm not going to recommend something that I think goes against the intent of the zoning code, even though from a business standpoint, from a community standpoint, I, I think it makes a lot of sense. But from the intent of the code for a variance, I can't see the argument. And I can't, I can't vote yes for something that I can't see that interpretation in the code for. And that's, that's a line I can't cross. The village board has the ability to do what they want. Which they do, but I, looking at the letter of our code and the intent expressed, I, I can't see this specific variance from a code perspective. So in terms of recommendations, I, I don't see it.
Sure. I, I see that you are definitely focused on the letter of it and I feel like the, a lot of these setbacks and easements and their, and various things are to provide access for utilities in the future or prevent the Great Chicago Fire two-point-O or safety, but this is not a subdivision. This is not a downtown neighborhood. Um, there's nothing but a, a, a Wendy's parking lot across the street. And so I, I don't, I, I think it is within the spirit. Uh, you know, they were made to be varied, uh, were these, uh, uh, you know, codes. So, um, like I say, I will definitely be voting yes. Barring some compelling argument to the contrary.
Mr. Ziger?
Mr. Frolin?
Both public hearing, then both, correct? This clarifies. Alright, I will close this pu- public hearing at seven thirty-six. And I will entertain a motion to make a recommendation to approve the variance decreasing the setback as noted.
So moved with Mr. Khan's, you're making a slight adjustment. Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Mr. Revich?
Hi.
Ziger?
Nay.
Mr. Rosetti?
Hi.
Mr. Gray?
Nay.
Mr. I?
No.
Yourself, fine. So, Mr. Rod?
Aye. As I was absent last meeting, we have a little business that we need to dredge up.
We all move business.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I myself have no announcements. Although you would have Mr.
Yes, um, as I stated with last meeting, I'd like to give the planning zoning commission updates on cases they've heard that went to the village board. Um, at the last meeting, you guys heard though, we have a lot of parking, we have a parking lot variance for the soon-to-be Park District Park on Kelly Road. Uh, the planning zoning commission did recommend denial once the board. Last week.
Thank you.
And, um, they approved it with some changes. They put a four-year sunset window on it and then they're also required, um, for accessible stalls to be paved. Um, for the parking lot before it can be utilized as a backfield, ball field, whatever the park districts in our user board. So those were the two changes made to, to the approval. Uh, and that was a new case that was brought to the, uh, planning zoning commission, or to those boards on the planning zoning commission. And we don't have a meeting in two weeks.
Thank you, sir.
Do you not have a meeting in two weeks?
Yeah. I'll send out an email tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-eight.
I'll move that motion.
My second.
Mr. Revich?
Aye.
Ziger?
Aye.
Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. I?
Yes.
Myself, aye.